Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 30th Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Clerk Boak, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Pali Vanoglu, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Cost, Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Jackson. Seven members present.
Thank you. We are to the minutes of the September 23rd meeting. Vice President Hussein.
Sure. Just very quickly before I move these, if you look at page three, and this is actually the very last line prior to the adjournment, talks about President Garza asked what the difference was between the bids. Mr. Crowe is not able to provide that, or stated they would provide that. I understand it's only been a week, but that's not difficult information compiled. Was that conveyed?
Yes, it was. Actually, Mark Lawrence sent that.
I know he sent a schedule, but I'm talking, there was something with regard to bids?
It did have.
Okay, I missed that. Okay, perfect. All right. With that being said, I would move the minutes.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Okay, now we are to public comment on agenda items. If there's anybody here from the public that would like to come down, you'll have three minutes to speak, and please state your name for the record. Coming once, going twice. I don't see anybody. Okay, I don't think we had anybody online that registered. Okay, well, moving on past public comment. All right, we are to discussion, action, item, resolution B, appointment of Jonathan Smith, at-large member of the Lansing Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Lansing-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors, term to expire February 28, 2029. How you doing, Mr. Smith? If you could, please make sure that light's on for your microphone, and pull that to you if you could. So obviously, your appointment came to us at a previous meeting, and it was for Lepfa. Obviously, you didn't want to serve on Lepfa, you wanted L E D C. So if you could, we all have the application in front of us. You can just go and speak a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
There we go, sorry. Thank you very much. It's Anarbi here. Appreciate the appointment by the mayor for this position, and look forward to answering questions you have and hopefully obtaining your support for this role. My name is Jonathan Smith. I tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm interested in it, and then happy to answer questions. Was born here in Lansing, grew up in the region, stayed here for college at Michigan State. After college, moved to Washington DC and spent most of the next 25 years there. And most of that time working on Capitol Hill, working on public policy issues for a number of members, including folks from the Michigan delegation like Carl Levin and John Nigle and Gary Peters. Most of my work during that time focused on economic policy, so issues like access to capital for manufacturers, small business lending, tech and innovation policy, a lot of work supporting our state's manufacturing sector and auto sector during the Great Recession and the auto crisis. About four years ago, my wife and I decided to move home. Really, that decision was twofold. One was, we are in that sandwich generation of folks who are still busy raising kids, but also increasingly having responsibilities for aging parents. And so, being back home close to my mother-in-law and my mother to help them, and also give our kids the ability to spend more time with their family, was an important consideration for us. But the other, you know, really driver of that decision was the opportunity to come and work in a public service role for the state of Michigan. So for the last four years, I've been with the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, working on very similar issues to the issues I worked on in Washington DC, but with a focus on communities here in Michigan, with a deeper level of engagement directly with places like Lansing, as they have looked to try to draw down, you know, federal dollars and spend them effectively to increase their community's vitality and resilience, to make the right investments in things like workforce and placemaking. It's been a really exciting opportunity and very rewarding to meet with folks all over the state and help them think you're going to solve some of the challenges that their communities have been facing. Don't want to speak for the mayor, but I think, you know, when he asked me if I would be willing to be appointed for the L E D C Board, I think it was probably two reasons. One, I had been giving him a lot of unsolicited advice based on my experience, and I think, you know, he was excited to give me a place to formally, you know, take the work I've done over the last 30 years and apply it here in Lansing. But I think the other reason was, what, you know, I have shared with him many times, my belief that Lansing is the city in the state of Michigan that has the most potential for growth. I believe that Lansing could be one of the fastest-growing cities in the Midwest, if not the country. If you look at places around the country that have experienced a lot of economic growth, a lot of increased prosperity for their residents, you often see, you know, this combination of world-class research universities and state capitals. That is a really powerful mix. And you can look at Columbus, Ohio, or Madison, Wisconsin, or Austin, Texas, and see cities that have experienced a lot of population growth, a lot of inbound investment that has really benefited local residents in meaningful ways. And, you know, I would love to see some of that growth be able to come here in Lansing. And so, I feel very, very passionately about that, and, you know, excited to try, you know, work with the folks on the board and all of you to see that vision become a reality. So, happy to answer questions. I don't want to take up too much time, but hopefully it gives you a sense of who I am and why I'm very excited about this opportunity.
Well, thanks for being here, and I appreciate your willingness to serve. I will open it up for any questions or comments from council. Does anybody have any questions or counsel for, or from council for Mr. Smith? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so I was blown away. So I, you know, read through, obviously, the commentary on the application, had a conversation with the mayor. We talked about, you know, obviously some of your, some of your work with Leo, and some of the work in DC, and then really just the excitement you had for actually the city of Lansing, and obviously the great Lansing region. Just real quick, Board meets, because we always ask the questions, so I'm going to make sure we're consistent. Board meets the first Friday of every month, 8:30 a.m. at L E D C offices out in Washington. No problem making that meeting.
Of course, happy to be there.
Okay, fantastic. And then the other piece, the application date was June 30. Nothing's changed that would affect your eligibility.
Correct.
Say it again?
That said, your application was submitted in June.
Correct.
So I'm just ensuring that nothing has changed that would affect.
Nothing's changed, correct.
Okay. And then the last thing, and this isn't a criticism. I know you live in East Lansing, all right? So this would be a regional representation piece. I think, I could be wrong, maybe Mark can speak to this, but I believe this position is vacated by Michael McKissick, correct? I believe so. I believe so, yeah. So in any event, just curious, because you are so excited about Lansing, you're from Lansing, Bullishawn, Lansing's Prospects, and I think we should be asking this question a heck of a lot more. Why don't you live in Lansing? What could we do in the city of Lansing? What should we be doing to pull people in such as yourself and your families to the city of Lansing?
Yeah, well, in my instance, you could have had my mother-in-law live in Lansing when I decided to move here. You know, my wife and I, when we made the decision to come back to Michigan, you know, part of the deal was, she wanted to be walking distance to her mom. And it's been, you know, really, really great, because, you know, she's a retired elementary school teacher, and so, you know, for my kids to be able to walk over after school and get help with homework, and it's been fantastic and helped us an enormous amount. But as my, as they both, my kids and my mother-in-law got older, it's been really rewarding to see them. She had a health issue recently, not life-threatening, but it did impact her mobility, and, you know, they would walk over and help promote chores or just spend time with her. And so, for us, you know, a lot of that decision was driven by family considerations. You know, that said, I, you know, work in downtown Lansing, I'm a Lansing Income Dax, it takes about 10 minutes to get here, so I'm pretty close. And, you know, I really believe that Lansing is not unique in Michigan in terms of, you know, we have a lot of townships and a lot of, you know, municipal borders. But, you know, I really believe if you live in the Lansing region, you cannot have a strong Lansing region if you don't have a thriving and vibrant Lansing as its core. No other city or township nearby is going to be successful until and unless Lansing is successful. And so, well, yeah, I am not a Lansing resident today. I believe very passionately that a strong and thriving Lansing is in the best interest of all of the 500,000 people who live in this region.
No, and I completely agree, and it wasn't a criticism. I, you know, I didn't know if it was housing staff, or was it proximity to reputable, you know, restaurant and retail, or the school district thing, was it? Because I really think we need to have those obviously courageous conversations, but proximity to mother-in-law, certain accounts, right? That's incredibly important. That being said, I don't think there's any other questions. So I'm going to, oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. I ask this to everybody that gets appointed to a board. Now, we have four different board representatives that have constituent hours with their constituents. Now, if you do get appointed to this board, would you be willing to occasionally visit one of those constituent hours and discuss the great and exciting things that you guys are working on?
I'd love it. You know, in the last year through my day job, I think I've done 15 community roundtables around the state, everywhere from Ironwood to Monroe, and, you know, hearing directly from folks about what their hopes and dreams are for their community and what the challenges are that are holding them back from accomplishing that is like the best part of my job. So would love, would love to attend those office hours.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further comments from council? All right, seeing none.
Yep, so I've moved the appointment of Jonathan Smith as an at-large member of the L E D C, Tifa, Lansing-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Prior to us voting on that, are you able to stick around to 7 o'clock tonight to get sworn in?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. See you later this evening. Thank you. All right, moving down the council, the Committee of the Whole Agenda, we have Resolution C, Nonprofit Recognition, Michigan Peace Team. Anybody here from Michigan Peace Team? Could you please come down to the well and tell us a little bit about your nonprofit?
Sure.
I think you might want to press that button again.
How about now? There we go. I will. My name is Melody Arst. I am the Development Coordinator with Meta Peace Team. Our official name is Michigan Peace Team, but we have the DBA as Meta Peace Team. Our organization has been in Lansing for over 30 years to try and just bring it into a small area here instead of everything that we do. Our work is in the area of nonviolence. We do nonviolence trainings. It is very different than what a lot of people look at. They think of conflict resolution. That is not what we do. We are looking at violence de-escalation skills. So we do a lot of those trainings around Michigan, out of state, wherever we are invited, basically. And we do, we also place peace teams. We place domestic peace teams, again, across Michigan. We've had some that have been outside of Michigan. We've done work at the U.S.-Mexico border, and we actually have placed peace teams internationally also. Again, we go where we're invited. Our philosophy is not that we know what's right and everyone else is wrong, but if we are invited by a group of people that say we're having, say it's a rally, or a walk, or something of that nature, we've received some form of a threat, we really believe that it would be in our benefit to have a peace team there, then we place that peace team. And again, our goal is not to, is not to walk in between two, I'll use the term "dueling" parties, to say, "You're right, you need to back off." Our whole premise is not violence. Everybody has the right to their opinion, but we don't need to be violent about it. I can give examples if that helps. A little bit nervous, so there we go.
Okay.
It's okay.
Okay, so this came before us. Typically, we don't vote on something the same night, but I understand you're having some event that this needs to get done by. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
So we are having our signature event. Unfortunately, I do have to say that as of this evening, we started discussing the possibility of having to postpone the event. We think that everyone, their schedules are being impacted with the election. A lot of the people who are involved with our groups are very involved in having nonviolence at the polls. So there's been a lot of different things that are happening, and we think that's impacting our registration levels. But our signature event is our annual event. Well, we're moving back into annual. COVID really set us back, but we're moving back into that being an annual fundraising event. The event is actually supposed to be held in Detroit. We were having Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib speaking for us, and of course, we do a silent auction, 50/50 raffle, that type of thing there. And so that's where we were looking for having the licensing for us to be able to do that. And again, that's where we're moving forward with it tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Definitely understandable. And I see your address is 201 West Miller Road. Do you guys meet at the Crystal Ray Church?
Our office is in the upper portion of the Crystal Ray Church, yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Well, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
With that, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the resolution for nonprofit recognition, and this is for the Michigan Peace Team.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments? Seeing no additional comments. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving down to item D on the resolution, fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget priorities, Board of Public Service priorities for fiscal year 2025, 2026. So with Committee of the Whole, we have, I'll just read through our list here for the Committee of the Whole. We have $100,000, full-time employee focused specifically on housing, legal assistance for tenants and homeowners in the city, fund sidewalk repair by $200,000 for a total of $600,000, with a priority placed on underserved areas, fund local street repair funding by $1.7 million for a total of $7 million with a priority placed on underserved areas. Number four, we have funding for a GED prep and passage program. Number five, sustainability, $134,000 in funding for marketing, training, professional development, needed risk assessment, and updated plans, along with additional part-time employee. Funding for additional staffing to assist the sustainability manager with grant writing, project implementation, and other related duties. $400,000 funding for additional staff, arborists, and equipment and forestry to more efficiency, efficiently survey and maintain tree inventory consisting of hundreds of thousands of trees in what is known as the USA City of Trees. And number eight, finally, $75,000 feasibility study for a community center located in southeast Lansing. Do we have any additional comments or any additional budget priorities added? Just hoping that if you did, you'd have it in writing, but I don't see anything. Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just a quick question from Mark. So in terms of number one, the $100,000 with an FTE focus specifically on housing, legal assistance for tenants and homeowners in the city, I'm looking at, so there is actually, as part of the recommended budget per charter, the administration actually has to provide a document that discusses how they addressed, right, each one of these priorities. And if they weren't able to address, then why? And I'm looking at that document. It says under Committee of the Whole, budget proposes adding a staff member to address housing needs. So I'm thinking that's what that is, correct? Do we know if that position has been actually established and filled?
I do not know. This is the first I've looked at this document, so I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. All right. Because I'm looking at that, it also says that there was additional funding for sidewalks and roads, and I want to say, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but that we funded sidewalk repair at $700,000 this year. So I think you guys actually came higher than $600,000, if you're questioning. So I don't know if we need to adjust that. And then, I'm looking at five and six, and with the addition of Councilmember Jackson's funding for additional staff, he does the sustainability manager. Seems a little bit redundant. I don't know if we want to combine those. Yeah, so there's just a couple things here. I think with number seven, we did add a position for an arborist, but we had asked, as part of that conversation, I actually am the one that brought that last year, that was to add several positions within that particular shot. So I think, I think that's fine. And then I think for eight is fine as well, because I don't think we received anything that had, you know.
No, not as yet.
So I guess, I guess, you know, taking a look at number two, and then number five and six in terms of redundancy, I don't know, I just want to do something with those.
So what would be the total then for the sidewalk repair then? Because obviously, it's more than $600,000, isn't it? To the $700,000 now?
That is my understanding, yes, seven, yep.
And then maybe combined.
I don't think we're saying it's a priority of ours for them to take a step back.
Councilman Cost.
Yeah, thank you, President Garza. I would, I would say that maybe we should go, you know, if we're, you know, looking at a priority here, go for a million on that priority. With the conditions, from what I understand from Director Kilpatrick, the conditions of the sidewalks need a lot more than $1 million, but they're in pretty rough shape.
So then, so you're proposing fund sidewalk repair by an additional $300,000 for a total of?
Correct.
With the priority placed on underserved areas?
Yes, yes.
One million.
I think so, because you don't have an answer, right?
Yeah.
I would, I would propose that folks are comfortable with it, striking number five and adding six. Stay on that song.
I'm fine with that amendment, both of them. So you got motion for the amendment?
Yep. So I would move, yeah, so I would move the amendment to number two, fund sidewalk repair by $300,000 for a total of $1 million. And then I would move the striking of number five in light of this number six amendment.
Okay. Do we have any additional comments for that? Because we do have a proper motion. All right, seeing none. All those in favor accepting the amendment, state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Is it the public service?
Chair of DM PETA to discuss.
Sure, we can go move with the chairs of each committee. So we'll move on down to the development and planning. That would be Vice President Hussein.
All right, so the following were approved by committee on September 25, 2024, $80,000 for one FTE for L E D C with a focus on small business, minority businesses, female-owned businesses. This is something that we continue to, I hope they can prioritize in the budget. Something that I think they've discussed at length. I think they brought in some interns and some other folks from Seaton to take a look at that, but would love to see something full-time in perpetuity. Number two, $250,000, increased funding for the side improvement grant program. We continue to want to see that slow crawl to the $250,000. Right now, they are funding that at $175,000, which we certainly appreciate, but we know that every year there are a number of applications in our honor. Number three, the analysis of the side grants provided to small businesses continues to be something that is worthwhile. Number four, $40,000 to initiate RFP for engagement with stakeholders in completion of the Community Facilities Plan, including school and county buildings, complete with inventory of assets and goals and objectives for facilities that will serve as the basis for community facilities decisions in the future. Another thing that we've talked at great length about, and really the value of such a document in terms of our forward movement. And then lastly, $80,000 for one FTE compliance employee. For sure, all development agreements are being filed, including but not limited to income tax collection, Tifa's pilots, and Brownfields. And this actually goes back to, I believe it was Councilman Wood, which is our council, proposed this, and this is sad, kind of unaddressed, such as that time. Thank you.
Question or comment from Councilman Spatafor?
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein, item 3A, should that be March 1, 2026, the budget?
Absolutely. Later than March 1st. No, we actually talked about it. Yeah, so.
This is a '26 budget, though.
It should be, it should be March.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, come to us until March 26, 25.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any additional comments, questions for development and planning, budget priorities? All right, seeing none. We'll move down. Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Councilman Jax is not here, so Trinny?
Okay, thank you. This is quite a list, so bear with me. We are starting with the priority of $200,000 for housing support. The committee recommends creating a comprehensive plan that addresses the unique needs of our unhoused populations that include the unhoused, sheltered, transient, and individuals suffering with addiction, mental health, and physical needs. Equitable housing options for diverse unhoused populations, i.e. supporting diverse housing needs such as shelters, warming and cooling centers, and those that prefer not to be sheltered and transit populations. Now, just to elaborate on this first point, if you'll recall, I believe it was last year, approximately $800,000 was put toward the warming and cooling center plan that is currently being worked on. We recognize that $800,000 may be enough to get it going, but not necessarily enough to sustain this effort for the coming years. So we feel that prioritizing $200,000 towards this effort would help to create some sustainability in that area. The second budget priority is $100,000 for DEI implementation. The committee recommends adding a DEI implementation specialist to work alongside DEI officer and department leaders and staff to assist in implementation, implementing DEI strategies. The third is $50,000 for citizen complaints. The committee recommends creating and deploying a complaint awareness campaign identifying the citizen complaint process and history of general outcomes. Again, this is sort of a gap in our communication that we discovered through our committee meetings, that most residents may not be aware that you can file a complaint, and it doesn't have to be necessarily a city, department, or entity. It can be, you know, if they feel they're being treated unjustly and unfairly by any business in the city of Lansing, they can reach our offices and lodge a complaint. And so, this would be an effort for a campaign to let folks know how they can go about doing that. The next is $100,000 in veterans assistance. The committee recommends adding a veterans' assistance specialist to add veteran, to assist veterans in applying for city jobs, access resources, and for housing support. The next is $100,000 for youth opportunities. The committee recommends creating youth opportunities, apprenticeships, internships, job shadowing, and paid positions where youth can learn, participate in public and civic engagement, and have a paid experience. The sixth is onboarding and DEI training. The committee recommends all departments and branches of local government, and I believe we would need to add the language, including boards and commissions, to receive onboarding and DEI training to ensure the quality of work and culture move meeting these role expectations. The last is $150,000 for disability inclusion. The committee recommends hiring a disability consultant to address the needs of persons, again, this sentence should be rephrased to say, "to address the needs of persons with seen and unseen disabilities." The consultant could address creating an inclusive culture, making adaptive accommodations, providing additional support in the community and in homes, and infrastructure investments to support those with impairments that are visuals, amongst others, who have special conditions, specialized conditions.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Councilwoman Trinny. That's quite extensive, and I appreciate the work that you all have done on the committee to identify these needs. Just to clarify for me, number one, $200,000 for housing support, it talks about, which I have an advocate for and support, unhoused and shelters, transient, and individuals with addiction, mental health, and physical needs. And then you indicated about warming and cooling in this, I guess, priority towards supporting the warming and cooling center, or is this, are you looking overall for these different populations? If you could just clarify that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So this stemmed from the conversation of the warming and cooling centers, and again, that was our intent with this first priority. Apologies if they are not written similar to other priorities. We are taking our best crack at drafting, drafting these as a committee. But yes, again, so we have that $800,000 to work with for now, but we want to ensure that. But we want to ensure that folks who, who do need a warming and cooling center in inclement weather that are part of the unhoused population here in the city, that, that they'll, will be able to help sustain that warming and cooling center model into the future. We have enough to get started, I believe, but we want to make sure that folks can access this in the years to come. And this is an effort towards that.
Okay, and in the committee, have you all spoke about or talked about, had dialogue about those that don't want to be housed?
Yes, and it looks like Councilwoman Carter has something to add. But I will say that my understanding is that there is a current solution in place through HRCS for folks who do not wish to go into an actual shelter, but they could still receive services and accommodations.
And just to add, it's also not only those who do not want to be housed, but also those who have animals as well. So it would be inclusive to those who cannot go into the traditional shelters that may have animals and pets that they would want to as emotional support. So we have had conversation with HRCS regarding that as well, for those who may not want to be housed.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any additional comments? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. I blinked there. Councilmember Pendivonaglu, on the disability inclusion, do you think that there's a opportunity here maybe to add some language about funding a handicap patrol parking? It's been a pretty serious issue as of late with those spots. I hear frequently about it, I believe Councilman Hussein, Vice President Hussein hears about it frequently too. And, and I see it all over the city. Those, those spaces are necessities for a lot of folks.
Would, do you want to answer that first, in that call on Councilman Brown?
Sure, yeah, no problem. I have, I have no issue with adding language to address that in number seven.
Okay.
So, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, I think that's a great point as well, Councilman Cost. I know that, I think we've worked on a few different situations with, with parking and individuals trying to access handicap accessible parking. I would say that we should have the parking enforcement, we've worked on a few other parking enforcement issues, is to make sure that they are, you know, investing and making that a priority within their department. Myself, though, looking at 150,000 for a consultant, I don't know how much you are able to do with that related to, you know, enforcement, but looking at overall the city and how we can help address the needs of the seen and unseen challenges for people with disabilities overall, as far as this, this portion, that's just my, my thought. I think I would like to add what you're talking about to the, to a priority for the parking department.
I think Councilman Brown, I don't know, and I'm not sure, but I don't think that all of the $150,000 would go to a consultant. I would assume that some of it doesn't. And traditionally, I believe that the, the handicap parking program has been volunteer-based. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was RSVP that used to do it. The patrol, I think in addition, in addition to LPD, I think is.
So I guess, I guess my question, Councilman Cost, because we have to obviously have a clean document to bolt on, not only out of this committee, but later. What precisely in terms of language should we be at?
Yeah, thank you, I was just gonna get to that. So perhaps at the end of special, the specialized conditions, with further focus on handicap parking enforcement? Further emphasis on handicap parking enforcement?
Yes, I agree with that language.
Okay. Got that for the record, Sherry? Okay. Alright, we'll move on down then to the Committee on Public Safety, Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Ours were much shorter. Portable speed bumps was the number one request. I, along with probably every one of you, heard about speeding nearly every day this summer. And with construction, it's something that we felt as a committee would be a good suggestion for the administration for the upcoming budget. The second one was to reinstate the LFD apprenticeship intern program, which was a very popular program. The third one was zoning personnel staff for administrative tasks related to the commercial corridor specialist. Our understanding was that the corridor inspector is, is very bogged down in paperwork. They're all bogged down in paperwork. This would be a position to alleviate some of that, so we can get more enforcement, get more things done in our corridors. As you all know, some of our corridors have seen better days. And there's just simply not enough time for one person to be able to cover all those areas. Finally, number four, utilizing $100,000 redevelopment, non-motorized plan to focus on pedestrian safety. We have heard a lot about pedestrian safety. I have over the course of two years. This would invest some money in trying to focus in on those crosswalks, different spots where we see pedestrians having a difficult time crossing, especially in areas of, you know, 40, 45 mile an hour and it's a crosswalk and you've got 15 seconds to get across. That can be very tricky. And there's a lot of ways that other cities are combating it. And, you know, the only way we're going to combat it is with money.
Alright. Councilwoman Carter?
Thank you, President Garza. Councilman Cost, can you tell me a little bit more, just because, just for educational purposes for me? The portable speed bumps, I am definitely in agreeance with that. Would that be allocating a certain amount of portable speed bumps? Or will we have to take it, pull and take and relocate?
Yeah, so the request was, is, I believe at one point the city did own portable speed bumps and those are lost to time. I believe when I talked to the mayor this summer about the opportunity for these, they were about five grand apiece. Mark?
I feel like that number was higher, but it's in the ballpark, I think.
Five, it was five or 10 grand for the set.
A set, that's, that's what I remember, is, is you really just don't buy one.
Yeah, and the idea was to be able to, you know, maybe not put a money amount and we end up with a ton of these, but try a small amount of them, see if these are effective in slowing, calming traffic in certain areas, including the, the speed readers that LPD deploys, the trailer they deploy, trying to reduce speeds. You know, especially straight, our straight, narrow streets in the summer are just, you can hear it all night long.
Yeah, in, in the past, I think that we did have a, a number, I think we had around 20 or 25,000 dollars so we could have one set per ward, is what our budget priorities were in the past for that. I don't think it ever happened, but that's something that we looked at in the past, get a set per ward. Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, so just real quick, number two, was there any conversation? So the budget that we approved for this fiscal year did contemplate kind of the re-initiating of a cadet program in Lansing Fire Department. Did you guys have any conversations with the administration in terms of where we were at with that?
So I am actually gonna turn this over to, this was your?
Number four.
Yeah, number two?
Number two.
Was, who was? Well, I'm drawing a blank here on who brought it up. Because I don't have my notes in front of me.
I think this is actually a carryover. Yeah, I think it's a carryover, but in.
I thought we reduced it.
But when we, yeah, so when the, when we got the recommended budget, there was actually a conversation, we don't approve a line in the budget. But in terms of the dollar amount within the LFD for operating, they, you know, that was contemplated as part of that. So I think it might have been, this might have been addressed, I'm just curious as to where we're at with the reinstating of that program.
Mark, do you mind checking into this and getting back, you know, send it to full council when you get the answer to that? Alright, thank you.
And I apologize, I don't have my notes from our meeting, but I, I thought that it was brought up that that was actually fulfilled and we had struck that, I thought that we only had three priorities. And unfortunately, I don't have my notes with me here.
Okay, so then we'll move down to the Lansing Board of Public Service Budget Priority Resolution. There's six different ones, I won't read through everything, but one, increase general fund support for the city street system asset management plan, increase funding for sidewalk repair right away, maintenance and improvements, expand funding mechanisms to update and improve the city vehicle fleet system, establish Lansing as a leader of water quality by prioritizing elimination of combined sewer overflow, preventing sanitary sewer overflows, development, develop and implement a solid waste plan for the city of Lansing, city to, that enhances efficiency, reduces costs and minimizes overall waste generation, and implement the energy audit recommendations as feasible to maximize efficiency and reduce the cost of maintaining cities' facilities. So I'm hopeful the administration implements those budget priorities, as we all can agree that those are all needed. And with that, do.
So when, so when I move the resolution, could I just move the resolution with the amendments made on the floor in addition to?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any additional comments or?
Just for clarification's sake, I wanted to emphasize, we've got about $4 million worth of requests in here, about 2.3% increase in the general fund appropriation. So obviously it's more of a sort of would-be-nice list than, you know, expecting everything to get done. So I wanted to emphasize that to those that are paying attention, all of these are important. But obviously when it comes down to us having to vote on a final budget, $4 million is a lot of money on our budget. And that doesn't include pay raises for the existing FTEs and cost increases for materials and supplies that the, that the city currently buys. So appreciate all the work doing into these, there's some stuff that I'm very supportive of, I just wanted to emphasize that, that we're, we got a big list here, all of it's important. But we're gonna have to make some decisions when the budget comes from the mayor and when it gets in front of us.
No, I appreciate that, yep, this is definitely a wish list that we would all like to see. Hopefully some more money falls out of the sky and we're able to fulfill all those, but. Well, with that, Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, and I think it's important too, priorities, yeah, we've always actually discussed them as a wish list. But, you know, as, as opposed to money falling out of the sky, I think we also have to be very, very, I think, you know, we're gonna have things on the agenda tonight, as a matter of fact, that affect our general fund, our revenues. We have to be very, very intentional about the way that we grow the city, the way we grow our taxpayers, because all of these things have value and merit. And at some point it will be amazing to have all, including in our general fund budget. With that being said, and I also want to say this, I absolutely love that the Public Service Board does that, goes through that exercise on an annual basis. And I would ask that office staff, maybe you can send us, I don't know, tickler, early, early, you know, maybe January, February of next year. Obviously, we don't know what leadership will look like. But I think we might want to do a resolution as a body, and again, we can discuss this next year, but a resolution of the body just requesting that maybe some other boards think about doing this. Obviously, we can't compel them to do that. But I think of the Parks Board as an example, they go through a CIP exercise every year, which is awesome in terms of their capital improvement list, but it's not, it's not a holistic conversation. And I, I would really like to hear what, you know, some of these folks on the force of missions, as kind of those frontline representatives, what they would like to see for what priorities they have. And again, I think it would be just an awesome tool for the administration, our budget director, and then the respective departmental directors to have as they craft the recommended budgets. So with that being said, I would move the resolution fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget priorities with all of the amendments we discussed here at this stage. And then also, this would include, sorry, the Board of Public Service Budget Priorities fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, do we have any additional comments? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes. Alright, for those that are out in the audience, it's about quarter to seven. We are getting ready to enter into closed session, so we will be back as soon as we possibly can and potentially adjourn for a quick recess and then we will be right, right back to council. Alright, Vice President Hussein?
Pursuant to MCL 15.26E, I hereby move that we, sorry, we recess in the closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation and open meeting will have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the city of Lansing concerning these cases. Atkinson versus City of Lansing, Capital City Labor Program versus City of Lansing, People of the City of Lansing versus Miggins, City of Lansing et al. versus Purdue Farm et al. This pertains to opiate litigation. City of Lansing versus Woodside Metal Apartments Owner LLC, this pertains to the Sycamore Townhomes. City of Lansing Treasury versus, Davis versus, Davis versus City of Lansing et al. Fisher versus City of Lansing, Fitzpatrick versus City of Lansing et al. Harkin versus City of Lansing, Hawkinson versus City of Lansing et al. Howlett versus City of Lansing, Hewlon versus City of Lansing et al. Lee and City of Lansing OPV Partners LLC versus City of Lansing et al. Phillips versus City of Lansing et al. Romero versus City of Lansing et al. Simmons versus City of Lansing and Ward versus City of Lansing et al.
Sherry, we need to do the roll call, please?
Yep. Councilmember Hussein? Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Carter? Councilmember Pelley, Pelley Vanoglu? Councilmember Spadifor? Councilmember Cost? Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
We will be back shortly. Alright, okay. Alright, we will reconvene and no further business on the agenda. We will adjourn with a five-minute break and we will be back for our city council.